Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that Pastor Roger Thompson from Calvary Chapel, Maricopa, please come forward. He will give us our invocation. Pastor, please remember to hit the button on that microphone, the little green light is on, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led to us tonight by Vice Mayor Nancy Smith. Please rise.
Let's pray. God in heaven, we just come before you, Lord, tonight. We thank you, Lord, that we're here. We live in a country, Lord, where that we can meet like this, gather, Lord, and Father, we ask that you would protect our city, Lord, during this time, Lord, give us wisdom and direction, and that we might practice safe distancing and things, Lord, to keep people safe. But at the same time, you know, Lord, we just pray that you would move in such a way that we would see this COVID-19 be a thing of the past, and that we'd be able to move forward. And we want to just tonight lift up the City Council meeting. We pray for wisdom and direction regarding the decisions that are made here. We want to just lift up the two City Council members, Lord. We thank you for them. We ask, God, that they would be an intricate part of what you're doing in our city, Lord, and that this council would work together for your good and for the good of the people. We want to lift up our first responders, our fire, our police, our paramedics. We ask, God, that you protect them during this time, Lord. They're out working. We thank you for our doctors and our nurses, our schoolteachers, that are really on the front lines. And we want to thank you, God, for our military. And we want to finish up by just praying for our leaders, just not in our city, our state, but also our government leaders. Give them wisdom and direction. This is still a United States of America. So we pray against the division that's taking place. And we pray all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Time to move to the roll call.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi. Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Vidiello.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, that'll take us to item three. Tonight's a special night where we get to say hello to some new council members and goodbye to old ones. And we are indeed very grateful for all the service and time and effort that they do put in and have put in. And so we want to take just a few moments and give some recognition and some thoughts and some few, a few little trinkets of our appreciation. And we want to make sure that everyone knows how certainly appreciative we are for all that they have done for us. So just first and foremost, I wanted to recognize the fact that Councilwoman Gussi was unable to attend tonight, as she has family members who are suffering from COVID. And so she also, in being near them, thought it was best not to, not to come here tonight. And I think we would all agree with that. But we certainly want to thank her for her years of service. As you know, she's served twice on this council, and she has done a lot for a lot of people. So I'm going to come down there in just a moment to show you a few things that we want to present to her and some other stuff that is running a little late tonight, so we apologize. But we've got a few things, and we'll move on to Councilmember Brown here in just a moment. So. As I said earlier, Councilwoman Gussi, if you haven't had a chance to meet her or know her, there are very few people, I think, in this, in the service of this city or anywhere that is as passionate about veterans as she is. Something that's very near and dear to her heart. She has worked very closely in her personal life, in her job, to move forward the causes of veterans and veteran suicide that occurs so regularly here across the country. And so the council wanted to tell her thank you for all of the hours of service. And one of the things that the Army and the military and police and fire and even cities do is they oftentimes have challenge coins. And so a lot of us end up with these challenge coins that we exchange between one another. And so what the council wanted to do is we wanted to give her this beautiful flag that's stained. It has her name inscribed on the bottom, and it says, "Councilwoman Julia Gussi." And on top of it, it has a place where she can put all of her challenge coins, and she can hang this on her wall. So we wanted to tell her thank you and give her this little momento, token of our appreciation. We have one more coming that's still on the way, and I'll probably present that a little bit later in the program. But if you'll give her a big round of applause as she exits. Thank you. Helen, Helen, head on. There we go. Helen, would you come on up here as well? Come on up. So as you know, Councilmember Brown has served valiantly on this council for 12 years. 12 years. Give her a big round of applause there. And in all that time, Helen has supported him and kicked him out of the house so he would go to meetings. And, you know, this job cannot be done without her support. And so these are for you. Don't go anywhere. So Marvin, we wanted to present this to you. Now, again, we have something else that's still coming. But Marvin, if you want to go ahead and set that down, you can. We have some cards here for you. One of them has a little gift card in here for dinner, and also many thanks and appreciation tokens so that hopefully you guys can enjoy your time. But I wanted to, I wanted to give you a little token of our appreciation in a way that you perhaps didn't think of. And that is that, you know, sometimes on the council, we don't always agree on everything, right? And that's okay, because when we don't agree, we grow and we learn and we get better and we become better friends because we get over that, right? And one of the things you may or may not know is that, well, I'll tell you this in a second, but the council chipped in here, and we wanted to give you a little present that is a couple of airline tickets. Okay? Now, if you look at these airline tickets really closely, you'll see that maybe, just maybe, it's not what you expected, okay? And sometimes in legislation, that's what happens. It's not what we expected. And if you don't know this, Marvin, I can call you Marvin, I hope, Marvin, Marvin was very passionate about an opportunity the city once had to get an airport, okay? And, and this airport was, was for some, the end-all be-all, and for others, it was the biggest travesty known to man. So we, as a council, wanted to not only give you tickets, first class, anywhere you want to go, but we wanted to bring Copa Air to you. So while we may not have our own airport, we don't care. We're going to land this thing anyways. And, and this airline is so impressive, because this is no standard airline. This is Copa Air, okay? And when you buy a ticket on Copa Air, you get a T-shirt. So, there you go. You get your own emblazoned specialty pillow, okay? Everybody needs that on your airlines. You get an incredibly furry and comfortable blanket, okay? Because those are really important when you're up in 35,000 feet and it's cold outside. But as if that's not it, other airlines, they serve peanuts. We get pork rinds, okay? This is the airline for you folks, okay? Now, of course, we have to be safe, and we have hand sanitizer, again, emblazoned with the logo, Copa Air. And you get your own mug, okay? It says Marvin Brown, Copa Air. This is the personalized detailed service you get in Maricopa's airline. And again, let's see what else we have. Oh, you do get some peanuts, but they're cocktail peanuts. So those aren't any good. Just stay away from those. Now, last but not least, you get your own Copa Air mask, again, very sanitary, right? And, you know, the fact of the matter is, is I'm not going to lie, this is a new airline. We've never flown this plane before. So if it goes down, I suggest you use the whoopee cushion as a stopping to hit your head on the seat in front of you, or just use it for the last because you're going down anyways, okay? So welcome to Copa Air and thank you for your service on the council.
This clearly is surprise. I, Tony Smith knows how much I feel about airports in Maricopa. This really catches me quite by surprise. Thank you very much, colleagues. You know, when you have so many people to thank, it's hard to know where to start. But I will start first with Helen, because Helen encouraged me to file for counsel. I had no intention, when we moved here, although I've been very active in Michigan and several other cities politically, I had no intention of being active politically in Arizona. But she encouraged me to step out. We didn't have much time to file. I had to get petitions filed very quickly. And through all the conferences that we've had to attend representing the city, through some of those e-sessions that lasted 2:00 AM that we well remember, she'd never complained. She understood. And that's extremely important, to know that your better half, your wife, supports you. Extremely important. There's so many people to thank. I've already personally thanked my appointees to the committees that we've had and a board member. Personally, I've thanked them. I will thank them again. I would, I really want to thank the citizens of Maricopa, who gave me a four-year contract in 2008 and renewed it twice. And I deeply appreciate that, and I'm honored. And I take that seriously to, to represent you in turn, with a number of organizations that I've had the pleasure of serving on, representing you. For 12 years, I was on the Pinellas County Water Augmentation Authority, past 18 months as its treasurer. I was a founder member of Maricopa Economic Alliance, what do we call it, MEA. I was, several years, the Pinellas County Crimes Victims Compensation Board. I'm trying to think what I haven't done. I was four years the Public Safety and Retirement System. And I was most, most proud of the fact that I championed that the senior citizens of this city were able to use the old Copa Center to recreate. That took some doing to convince Roger to not only upgrade the air conditioning, but to take down the stage so that seniors wouldn't fall. But that's my proudest accomplishment, very frankly, because seniors were able to use that for cribbage, car, plane, truckers, you name it, for many years, up to the time that A.D. had to take it down for these improvements. But service is very important. Whatever position you hold, whether it's a very top position, 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, state office, county office, township office, if citizens elect you, you should serve seriously and do the very best job you can. It's extremely important. I'd like to thank my colleagues that served with me, First Corps around, Tony, Macquisha, Carl, Ellen, Brent, Joe, later on, Bridger came on, Peg, Dan, Leon, briefly. Each time adding strength, their own strength, unique strength, to council. I especially enjoy you guys, my last council. Bob, you and Amber will be joining a great team. As I say, they have great strengths. You bring great strengths to it. You will enjoy it. Sometimes you will be puzzled, but never disenchanted. You add strength to it. And topping that list, this young man, many call Mr. Price, I'm called Christian, I call him Chris. He has done such a remarkable job for this city, that in his third, really his six years mayor, his colleagues, mayors of Arizona, selected him to be their president of the Arizona League. Now, that's remarkable. That is remarkable, just being in office six years. And many times, you could be mayor of a city 15, 20 years. And many times, you could be mayor of a city 15, 20 years and never get that opportunity. You could serve on the board, Arizona League, but never as its leader. But Chris has been able to do that and been able with prudence, with humor, with direction, lead us. We have, as a city manager, someone who should be a race track driver. Because Ricky comes very close to Indianapolis 500, that follows 500 miles, five hours, but at the same time, always staying in the proper lane with prudence. That's Ricky. We have the best municipal clerk west of Lake Michigan, Vanessa Burris. She's not only a very competent, professional lady, but she has all the class in the world. We have representatives legally, Beskivens Law Firm, a senior partner, who has represented the city legally since 2003. And there again, is a bundle of leadership, because his colleagues, the Arizona Bar Association, chose him as their leader. And we have him. We have a wealth of talent in the city, great friends. I will always love Maricopa. I truly appreciate the opportunity to have served. Thank you.
Okay. Well, before you go, you can't end without an official street sign with your name on it, can you? Counsel, I know that you all wanted to say a few words as well. Before I go any further, I did want to point out that that wonderful creation there on Copa Air was about 95% Nancy and Tony, and they did all the work in their house and cut out all the stuff, and they had the best collage time, so let's give them a big round of applause.
All right, so Marvin, as you know, we didn't always agree, did we? But I loved serving with you. And you know what I loved the most? Is that even when we agreed or disagreed, you were going to give it to me straight. And you weren't going to fuss around, you weren't going to squabble over it, you were going to give me your opinion. And I loved that, because on City Council, that is so important, that you have different voices, and you gave that to me. Sometimes you changed my mind, I love that. Sometimes I may have changed yours, but I loved it. And I think one of the things that I also loved is that you always had a smile for me, you made me laugh, you always had a hug for me. Now, I had to put up with some Tony jokes, because you have a few Tony jokes in the back of your pocket, and I had to put up with those, but that's okay, Tony knows and understands, and I do as well. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you, how well you serve this community. You're phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. And we're going to miss you, but I know we're going to see you around constantly, so thank you very much, Marvin.
I'm going to miss you, Marvin, Vice Mayor Brown. I'm going to miss you. And I want to thank you for direction, but I want to also acknowledge your uncompromising memory, that you can bring a story from 40 years in your past and make it relevant today and remember the details associated with that. I can't remember why I left my house yesterday and where my keys were. And that always, always, always impressed me, Vice Mayor Brown. God bless you, I'm here. Need not just call, whatever you need from me, I'm right here for you, sir.
I got to tell you something, the biggest thing I'm going to miss, besides our council night, is our drives, our discussions, our meetings that we go to, the conferences we go to. And I just got to say thank you, because I really do appreciate I've learned, I've been listening for years, and I got to serve with you. And that's probably one of my proudest moments, along with everybody else up here. I want to thank everybody, but thank you for believing in me and taking care of the city for the 12 years.
I don't know what to say. And that's like weird, right? When I was first elected, I thought to myself, I don't know what I'm doing, right? Because that's what we all think when we're first elected. But I had the courtesy, or the great honor of sitting next to you for a lot of my years as vice mayor. And I always call you vice mayor anyway, because that's what I feel. And the comedy, the joy, the happiness I have on Tuesday nights, when I got to sit next to you and talk and laugh and tell you, hey, you're not whispering, right? Everybody's hearing you. Or turn off your microphone, because I was like, oh crap, we're in trouble. Those days, you make it a joy to be on council. One of the reasons why I think to myself, maybe I don't do this again in the future is because I won't be there with you. And it's like emotional, actually. There's not, on my hand, I can count how many people I respect, and you're one of them. Thank you.
Let's give one more big round of applause for Councilmember Marvin Brown. This one's for, yeah, here's a right there. Okay, so we also have one more for Councilwoman Gussie. Like I told you earlier, this has her years of service on the council, again, 2010 to 2014 and 2016 to 2020. So again, we want to make sure that we thank her for all of her years of service on this council and what a great job she's done, so thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to invite Judge Riggs to come forward. Thank you Judge for being here, and he is going to offer the oath of office to each of our new incoming council members, or those that have been re-elected. And so we have four of those at this time, and we'll start with Ms. Amber Learman. So please come forward, then we'll go to Bob, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Smith, and then myself. So please come forward with family and your arrangements.
Stand right there. You can't, that's... She wants to get right over there, you're going to hold the Bible for her. They can, absolutely. And so you're going to raise your right hand, so they won't be on by your left hand, so right over here, so if they can just have one of them step right up here, right up here. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amber Learman...
I, Amber Learman...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of council member...
Of council member...
Of the city of Maricopa...
Of the city of Maricopa...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Councilmember Learman will sign the oath of office and also the code of ethics, after which she will take her seat up here on the dais.
Councilmember-elect Bob Marsh.
Judge?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bob Marsh...
I, Bob Marsh...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of council member of the city of Maricopa...
Of council member of the city of Maricopa...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, Councilmember Marsh.
Thank you, Judge.
Councilmember, they want a few more pictures. Oh, I gave you yours, right? Okay. Vice Mayor Smith. I hope so. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nancy Smith...
I, Nancy Smith...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of council member of the city of Maricopa...
Of council member of the city of Maricopa...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, Councilmember Smith.
Mayor Price.
In your face there?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christian Price...
I, Christian Price...
Do solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of mayor of the city of Maricopa...
Of mayor of the city of Maricopa...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, Mr. Murray.
Welcome to our new council, the city of Maricopa. Nice job, you guys, congratulations. So, like all times, when the way we do this here in the city, is now it's time to get down to business. So you ready? Excellent, let's go. At this time, we'll move to item five, and thank you again for your participation, even despite these COVID times and everything going on. And again, many, many, many thanks to those who have served so valiantly. At this time, we'll move to item five, which is Proclamations, Acknowledgements and Awards, which we have none, report from the mayor, which I will basically forego at this time, just based on the fact that we have so many things that we've been doing so far tonight. I believe we don't have any report from the city manager, and so I'll take us to item eight, which is the call to the public. I have no speaker cards, but if you'd like to approach the podium, tell us what's on your mind, we're here to listen, so please do so. Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public time and move on to item nine, which is the minutes, item 9.1, 9.2. Counsel, any questions on the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve, please? Have a motion and a second. Councilman Wade, any further discussion on these items? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that'll take us to the consent agenda. Counsel, any questions on consent at this time, anything you'd like pulled from consent for further discussion from our city staff? Okay, seeing nothing, can I have a motion to approve consent? Can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
Still moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Grabbed it over there from Councilman Videlo, my apologies. So motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that'll take us to the regular city council meeting agenda, which is item 11.1. This is an ordinance of the mayor of the city council of the city of Arizona amending the zoning requirements as described in the zoning case planned area development, PAD, or 20-05, for the Stonegate PAD, which approximately 54 acres generally situated on the northwest corner of Allen Stevens Parkway and Stonegate Road within the city of Maricopa Incorporated limits. The parcels of land are situated in a portion of section 35 and 36 of Township Four, south range three east of the Gila and Salt River Basin and Meridian for Pinal County, Arizona. This is for discussion and action. Rudy, take it.
Mayor, councilmembers and new councilmembers. Hello. As mentioned, this is a request by Sketch Architecture Company on behalf of Maricopa Stonegate LLC, amending the Stonegate Planary Development, Development Land Use Plan, Permitted Use Tables, and Development Standards. To provide a better understanding of the project's development process, the project is obtaining land use zoning approval by updating the plan and development plan from 2008. After completion of the development process, we would expect planning procedures to separate the property into individual parcels. Here are the general facts about the project, which can also be found within your staff report on page one. The subject site shown in the yellow star borders Maricopa-Catsamar Highway to the south, Stonegate Road to the east, Allen Stevens Parkway to the north, and the Sanita subdivision to the west. Here is the existing general plan map that was recently approved by the dis-council back in September of this year, from employment designation to mixed-use designation. The existing Stonegate PAD development was approved by the city in 2008, and then recently amended in 2019 for a proposed self-storage facility. And during that time, we saw a preliminary glimpse of the proposed amendment that's before you tonight. The planned development zoning designation is a current zoning district that at the time established TV development standards from setbacks, permitted uses, and parking ratio standards. This request is to modify the master development land use plan from 2008 that includes a modified permitted use table, modified development and parking standards, updated conceptual landscape and street design and phasing plan, and lastly, incorporating architectural design standards within this newly PAD. Staff commands applicant for developing the PAD framework tailored towards walkability, connectivity, and mixed-use development, and creating a sense of place in line with the general plan's village of a village core concept. Here's a conceptual land use plan that again is built around the notion of a village-type concept by developing a main street corridor along the east-west connection between the north-south road on the left side of the development to Stonegate Road on the right. Here's the bike and pedestrian plan that we also command the applicant on developing a plan that provides enhanced connectivity from the development and to the city's planned urban trail system along Maricopa-Catsamar Highway. Here's a street plan network plan that also achieves a level of design that is not only for transportation efficiency, but also finding a design and further enhancing the land use development pattern within this development. Here is the preliminary conceptual phasing plan. Do keep in mind that these are somewhat very fluid in nature in this PAD, but the intent here is to illustrate the nexus between developing the individual parcels and phases and the necessary road infrastructure for each potential phase itself. Oh, sorry. As previously mentioned, architecture design guidelines are being incorporated into this PAD that was not there before in the previous PAD in 2008, but that will help further develop the vision of this project moving forward. The project adhered to all public outreach requirements set forth in the zoning code that include mailing notices within 600 feet of the subject site, signed posting on-site, and legal notices in the local newspaper circulator, all notices advertising the required neighborhood meeting, planning a zoning commission, and tonight's city council meeting. Neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant, and several comments did surface on general clarification questions for the project, and the resident had concerns of privacy, which was addressed by the applicant by adding height restrictions in the PAD for any developments within 30 feet along Allen Stevens Parkway, which additional information can be found within your report, exhibit C. As required by the city zoning code, the Planning and Zoning Commission found that the amendment is consistent with the general plan, the site is suitable for the type of development intensity, that the project will provide adequate transportation facilities, and the proposal carries a more efficient use of land use and architectural design for the development. And then, lastly, on November 9th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the PAD 2005 major amendment, which is this ordinance, subject to the conditions stated in that staff report. Mayor, councilmembers, staff is here to answer any questions, the applicant is here as well to answer any questions, if any.
Great, thank you, Rudy, appreciate it. Council, questions at this time? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Rudy. I think the presentation really helped explain a lot of things. The one thing that I wanted to bring forward tonight is, in reading all of the attachments, I was really impressed that the developer heard some of the comments from the neighbors that were in meetings prior to coming forward with this in terms of city council approval. I was very, very impressed with that. And just to help the audience understand, I liked the fact that, from what I read, it appeared as though they minimized the amount of apartments that were actually on Allen Stevens Parkway, and then moved it more so that the residential also butts up to it and makes for a much calmer view from the Allen Stevens Parkway. I really, really appreciate that. I read the information on the buffer height requirement and understand that the apartments, well, any structure is limited to 25 feet. And so, the only question I had was, so, and I looked at the diagram that really gave you a profile of what it would look like from the apartment to the houses across the street, and is there a way for you to help me understand what the visibility then therefore would be with that distance and the 25-foot restriction? Is there an easy way to put that into words? Or, I mean, I appreciate the efforts, and I think it really meets the requirements that the neighbors asked and requested, but I didn't know if you had anything addition that might help them understand.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, other than the illustration here from the left side is a conceptual office of multifamily, but also incorporating the setback of-
Yeah, that's good, too.
-the 25-foot setback. And then on the right side is a private residence, and in the middle is our Allen Stevens Parkway roadway corridor itself. So you see already 150-foot separation or so, plus more, and this is very just general approximate, but it gives you a good understanding of how far of a distance we're talking about from one side to the other.
Yeah, I think it means the requirements, yes, yes.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I think I could be more succinct than that. If you're sitting in a second-story window-
Thank you.
And you're looking across that 150 feet, you will see the rooftop of the house, but you won't see the yard.
Thank you, perfect. I want to be able to explain that if I know-
There will be some exceptions if you have elongated yard, like some of the corner lots that are very large-
Right, right.
But typically, you would not even see the yard.
Very good, that helps me a lot visually. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I really do want to applaud the developer for listening to those comments and incorporating that and making those changes. Thank you.
Council, anyone else at this time? Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll move on to a motion, if anyone has one at this time.
Approve?
Motion to approve. We have a first by Vice Mayor Smith. Is there a second? Second by councilmember, what's your name? Councilmember Bob? I'm just kidding, I know his name. So, appreciate it, we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again from the developers, being so accommodating to our residents, we really appreciate it. That takes us to item 11.2, the Mayor and City Council's share presentation regarding an update on heritage district enhancements and other neighborhood services accomplishments from the past year. Nathan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Before you, we're just going to be given a quick presentation on some of the enhancements that have been done, specifically in the Heritage District in the last 12 to 18 months. And this has really been a collection of efforts from the, from various city departments, including public services, economic and community development, and our neighborhood services division particularly. But also, you're going to see a lot of efforts that were made from this community itself. And it's really exciting to see a lot of these fun projects that had clear starts, awesome successes at the end, and so this is going to be fun to see a lot of these projects. So giving this presentation tonight is actually going to be Judy Ramos, our manager of neighborhood services.
Wonderful. Thank you, Judy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Judy Ramos, and I just want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to share a story of a vision that became a reality through grassroots. I'm going to take this off if this is okay with everyone. Thank you.
It'd be easier to hear, and speak.
Thank you. Grassroots efforts that became a reality through community engagements and just the residents' desire to build a stronger, safer, and healthier community, working with city staff. Now, just give me a second, I got to figure this out. There we go. Okay, so today I'm going to provide you a brief background on the Heritage District, the coordinated compliance efforts that happened throughout the Heritage District, the Main Street improvements, including the new fencing along Plainview, solar streetlights, and housing rehabilitation. And then at the end, I'm going to call Nathan back up to share with you a few projects that are coming up in the district. So, the vision began with the city council's adoption of the redevelopment district area plan in 2009, which established the redevelopment district design guidelines, the district boundaries, and the Heritage District Advisory Committee. The redevelopment district area, or as we affectionately call it, the RDA, was the catalyst that propelled the exciting opportunities for the overall area. So jumping forward to today, council recently adopted the updated redevelopment district guidelines to reinforce and enhance the city's design expectations and to honor the heritage and integrity of those neighborhoods. Along with the update, council also approved the redevelopment area boundary by excluding undeveloped areas of the city in order to ensure that economic development efforts did not take from the identity of the downtown area and to provide protection for the character of the existing neighborhoods. Another aspect of the updated RDA includes an even stronger focus on grassroots community involvement through neighborhood meetings with structured, open discussions to maximize neighborhood input on various redevelopment efforts. We found that the neighborhood engagement piece was a really important process, and it was easier to do in that more casual neighborhood environment, so we are looking to expand that. So as indicated in the last slide, the redevelopment area, which was once approximately 3.1 square miles and included 1,000-plus acres of undeveloped land, was modified to more accurately focus on the already established neighborhoods. These included, and you can see on the third slide, North Maricopa, Maricopa Manor, McDavid, Edward Circle, Estrella Park, and Maricopa Station. As the RDA plan and the district boundaries were being defined, coordinated efforts had already been taking place. So this slide provides two great examples of those coordinated efforts. In March of 2019, city staff from Public Services and Economic and Community Development collaborated with homeowners to remove trash and debris from homeowner yards. These two efforts generated 27 tons of trash collected, and the need was so great in that area that we actually had to utilize front loaders to get the trash and debris into the dumpsters. Now, the property on the lower left of this slide, and these are more coordinated cleanup efforts, but particularly the property on the lower left-hand side of the slide is located in the North Maricopa neighborhood, and it belongs to a homebound senior citizen that's requiring 24-hour care. So the city assisted the homeowner with a dumpster, and all her elderly children worked together over a long weekend to clean up the property. They collected nearly nine tons of debris over that weekend. So these satellite images are visually telling of the coordinated efforts that have taken place over the course of the last four years. Although the satellite views are kind of small to see, I try to use vibrant colors to demonstrate that the green areas were demolitions that were required by a dot in order to make the overpass possible. But the ones that are highlighted in yellow are representative of unsafe hazardous structures that were existing and were removed through the homeowner and city coordinated abatement efforts. Now, the two neighborhoods, there's two neighborhoods represented on this slide, and they show 17 properties that have undergone coordinated cleanups and/or demolitions over the course of the last 18 months. And again, green represents the cleanups, and the red dots represent the demolitions. These are more slides, or more images of the unsafe structures that were removed as part of a demolition program. So, this is a program that we offered residents in an effort to help improve the neighborhood and the safety within the neighborhood. It was called the demolition program, and nine residents have utilized this program already to ensure safety in their respective neighborhoods. So, this slide provides more pictures of the before and after of some of these demolition efforts, and you can see some of these houses really, or, you know, needed to come down. Okay, so, this is, this is all, the next slides are going to be based on Main Street. So I took this photograph June of 2020, and as a result of our amazing public services staff, I took this picture in October of 2020.
Wow.
Isn't that amazing? Yeah. So, I really have to, we have to give special credit to our public services staff with their efforts and their ability to complete this project so quickly. It's made a huge difference for the residents in this community. The project included new sidewalks, new streetlights, obviously the new roadway, also some private property improvements in order to provide the adequate area for the roadway and the sidewalks for the construction of it. And if you can see on the third, it's the bottom row in the third image, and those planters were actually designed and installed by our public services staff, so we have a really talented staff. It's beautiful, I'm sure you've all taken the drive, I love it. So, also, as part of our Main Street upgrades, we created new street signs to enhance the neighborhood and, you know, to make it special. So, those actually came in before we did the improvements, but it was part of a grassroots effort, so the residents were able to get involved, they nominated their names, their whole family was allowed to nominate a name, staff vetted the names, and they selected what they believed were the best representative, the best representing names for their neighborhood. So those are it, the Cesar Chavez Heritage Lane, Maricopa, Road, Main Street, Mercado, and Stagecoach. Another project that took place was the Heritage District fencing, and this project is still underway, but if you look to the center of that slide, you're going to see a rendering that shows like a couple of pillars and some wooden slats. Well, today, it's becoming this very rustic elegant feature, and it has stone, beautiful stone pillars that you can see throughout the images, and also wooden slats that really enhance and complement the Heritage District neighborhood. Again, we have to give credit to our public services team for their commitment to quality. The project is scheduled to be completed- The project is scheduled to be completed early next year. The next project is the Solar Streetlight Project. This was accomplished through CDPG grants. We were awarded $182,000 to complete it, and I spoke to various neighbors, residents in the neighborhood after the streetlights were installed, and many of them were just really thankful and thrilled to have lighting for the first time in their neighborhood. And one of the things that Public Services staff did that was great is that they took special care in selecting lights that would really provide the maximum amount of lighting necessary, and still at a very good, a good rate for solar lighting. So they did a very nice job with that, residents are extremely happy. And please stop me if you have any questions along the way.
Doing great, thank you.
So, this is the last and final program that I want to share with you, which is dear and near to my heart. It's the Housing Rehabilitation Program. And I have highlighted these two properties because they really made a significant impact in the neighborhood and also in the lives of these two homeowners. The program was launched in January of 2020, and we closed it June of 2020, but during that time, we, we worked with these residents, and one of them needed roof repairs, and without those repairs being done, so the house on the left, had those repairs not been done, and they were minimal repairs now, it would have potentially created future deterioration of the roof with, you know, leaking roofs and things of that nature. So it was nice that we were able to include that as part of the rehab program. Additionally, that owner received a new front door stucco and new paint, and you can see the difference that it makes for that senior, and also the double-pane windows have helped them with the reduction of energy costs, and it's a little warmer in the house now for her and her extended family. Now, the house on the right is owned by a senior citizen who lives with her older mother. The owner has a disability, which at times requires her to use a walker and other times a wheelchair. When I visited this homeowner's house for the first time, as you can see, and it doesn't even show the, completely all of the debris that was caused by the leaves and the trees and the overgrowth of landscaping, so that was a really important project that we were able to clear that pathway in front of her home and repair, make some of the repairs to the broken-down sidewalk, and remove the overgrown trees and shrubs that were causing visibility and walkability issues for her. So the owner also received the double-pane windows and a proper installation of her AC window unit, and of course, new paint. So, these improvements, this house, you would have driven past it, you know, over and over and just never even thought about looking at this house, and now when you drive by, it's just like this little cottage, this little gem in the neighborhood, and what a huge improvement, you know, in her life, but also for the neighborhood. So, that concludes my portion of the presentation. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I'm going to call Nathan back up to share some future projects that they have in mind.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, while Nathan approaches the podium, you know, this was your vision, and most of you were in those neighborhood meetings early on when at best their thoughts were skeptical, but this is a city council that not only promises things, but delivers, and I congratulate you on this project, which is just one of many to come.
Thank you, City Manager. Nathan, before you go, I think we have a question from Councilmember Wade.
Excuse me, I do. Thank you very much for your presentation, it was very thoughtfully put together, I would say. I just have one question, though, in reference to using the term RDA versus Heritage District. Using that term doesn't make, doesn't really give you a clear connection to that being the Heritage District, and maybe it was just for the purpose of, what your purpose is here at City Hall, as opposed of it was used out in the district itself, so just thought I'd ask about that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Wade, yes, that's a very good question. The RDA internally refer to the redevelopment area, so that's how staff refers to it, but we always refer to the area, the actual area, as the Heritage District area.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
And I do just want to add that the term RDA is more of a legal term when used to acquire grants like the CDPG grant. A lot of these projects that were done here weren't used with general fund money, but were the benefit of national grants like the Community Development Block Grant that requires that you have areas like that, but all of us refer to this as the Heritage District. You know, this is the heart of the city there, and that's why we want to invest so many resources into it. It very much is the city's heritage. The RDA, it's really just a legal term.
Which is why I asked a question. I'm very much aware why it comes from, and just how we're using it out in the community. And grassroots versus, I have a question about the grassroots versus the Heritage Advisory Committee, and I know that there have been some challenges getting the Advisory Committee to participate in maybe some of the meetings and what have you, what efforts are going to be taken to help that out?
I think, Mayor and Counsel, we'll be bringing this item formally to you at our next agenda, if I'm not mistaken, and one thereafter with our formal recommendations, which we think, and it was hinted at with Judy's earlier presentation, that we're trying to magnify, allow more voices and more opportunity. So when we have a project in the district, there wouldn't be a 300 or a 600-foot notice, but we'll go to all residents within the district, and we will have community meetings and invite all residents to the meetings. I think that's the intent, but we'll bring that back formally to you in the near future.
Thank you. And finally, the Plainview Road and the access into the current Veterans Service Center going from west to east, that's another area.
Yes, sir, that will be on our CIP proposal at the upcoming budget. We already have prepared and working with the school district to provide an access that would be behind the current VA center, so the access would be more safe than where it is now, so that will be part of our improvement plan for next year's budget.
Yeah, I think that distance will make a difference, thank you. Thank you, that's all that I have right now. Appreciate you.
Councilmember Vidiello.
Thank you to staff and everybody together, but I especially want to thank Mike Riggs and his group, putting up with me on a couple projects that were going on down there that I had to call and call, because the citizens were calling and calling me over and over again, so, Mike Riggs, you did a great job, and again, I apologize for all the phone calls I had to make to you, but you guys did a great job, and Nathan and the whole group and all staff, thank you for what you do, and it makes us proud that you guys accomplished what we visioned and former councils too, so thanks again for everything and all the hard work that you guys do.
Nathan, proceed.
Yeah, it's just a very quick thing. As you saw, it's been a busy year, and if you think that we're going to slow down, I'm sorry to disappoint you, there's going to be even more exciting things coming in the future. We've already talked about some in the CIP, but as we receive more and more vision from the Mayor and Counsel, we're excited to put it on the ground for you and actually have this put into practice. We know that even though there's terms like Heritage District, really this is a community, and this is people's homes, and we know that in order to really sustain these homes, we need to have as many things here possible that you need to live, and that's why it might be interesting for those keeping count that the really high-profile groundbreakings we had lately, well, where were they? They're in this neighborhood. The new shopping center with the new organic grocery store and the other exciting restaurants and shops, it's right here in the Heritage District. The new hospital, it's right there in the Heritage District. Even the new business park that we recently broke ground to, well, it's right across the street from this Heritage District. This is the heart of the community, and you're going to see even more developments come within this area that is just going to further enhance this home that everyone has. So, with that, we're done.
Awesome. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you for the update, I really appreciate it. I heard a rumor right before this meeting started that our city manager spoke at the hospital groundbreaking, and I understand it was very entertaining that you said you came in, we gave you a list of projects, and boom, 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 you're all done, now we got to get you a new one, so we better get with it, huh?
Give us more.
Make the list a little longer this time.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Have any questions for Nathan or anyone else at this time? Okay, seeing no one, thank you very much, thank you Judy, thank you Nathan, thank you City Manager. Again, you know, I don't think we can convey enough that, you know, the Heritage District is a beloved area of the city, and it's something that we have long, long, long wanted to see improved in a way that was jointly working with the residents of that area, the businesses of this area, and how to show it's the love that we've always felt it deserved. You know, it takes time as a city, 17 years to get to that point, and it takes time and money, and, you know, I was explaining the other day to someone that I think all residents deserve this, but one of the biggest challenges with this area has been that there's no developer, there hadn't been a master plan development go on in this area, which is where a lot of the sidewalks and the streetlights and the curb and gutters come from, and so, in this case, this is really showing love by all of the taxpayers in the city of Maricopa, coming from the general fund, to go back into this area and to show that, you know, through grants and through general fund money, through CIP money, that this is the time in which we're focusing on this area, and we believe that its success is tied intrinsically to the success of the city at large. And so, this is our core, it's our heart, and I think that we'll continue with your approval, Counsel, to pour our love and our resources into this area so that it can truly become everything we want it to be, and so I look forward to that, to that future vision when we can look back and say, remember when, just like Judy's picture, that had a picture of that street with not much on it, and now look at how beautiful it looks, so I look forward to that day. Great, that takes us to item number 11.3, this is the Mayor and City Council shall discuss the selection of a Vice Mayor from among the members of the city pursuant to Maricopa City Code Section 2.05.090. This is for discussion and action. Counsel, I turn it over to you. No, go ahead.
I don't know if we want to have a discussion first.
I don't know, discussion is for you, it's your time.
No, I'd like to nominate Nancy Smith as our Vice Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion on this issue? No, and yes, Councilmember Marsh.
As a new kid on this team, I want to say that I've watched the current Vice Mayor from the Peanut Gallery, and I feel that she deserves another stint as Vice Mayor. I'd like to see what she can do with another year after this first year.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion at this time? You know, one of the things that I think is important to understand that, and Councilmember Wade and I had a chance to speak on this a little bit the other day, you know, a few years ago, we changed the Vice Mayor position from a two-year term to a one-year term, and there's pros and cons on every side, and we can look at that, and, you know, at the time, the idea is to give more people more chances, but it also wasn't intended to take away from anybody or anything. If the council feels that, you know, an individual is doing a good job, then they have every right to nominate that. You know, all I ask as the mayor is that it's someone who's willing to put in the time and the effort, because those who've been Vice Mayor on this, you know, Councilmember Wade, who's been previous Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember, current Vice Mayor Smith, certainly, I'm on the phone with you a lot, asking you to be places, because I can't be in all those places, and so I need you there to represent me, represent the city, and you do a great job of that in and of your own accord, and so, again, I would certainly welcome the motion and the second, I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Marsh, but ultimately, like I said, it's the council's decision of who, where, how, and when, and again, there is a motion on the floor. So, without any further ado, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Smith for the job she's done this year. I've given her some hard tasks, certainly with COVID being here and other things, and so I certainly would echo those comments, but again, I look forward to future years as well where others are given other opportunities also. So, again, nothing from her, because she's done a fantastic job, and I think that that shows once again as you're renominated for this year, so congratulations on that. With that, can I go ahead and move to a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Vidiello?
Yes.
Councilmember Learman?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
I thought she was going to say no, but yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, congratulations, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. With that, that concludes our festivities for the night. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Again, many thanks to those who have served on this council and those that we said adieu to tonight, and welcome again to our new members, and we will see you in two weeks. Counsel, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Have a motion, is there a second? Second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you in two weeks.